Monday, July 6, 2015, 7:00 PM, and the City Council Chambers will come to order. Will you stand for the invocation by Councilman Peter Tinsley?
Let's pray with me. "Jesus gracious heavenly Father, we is loving and praising you and so thankful for the privilege of gathering tonight, thankful for the freedom to come together and make decisions. But, Lord, we just ask for your guidance tonight to fill each one of us with a heart that is concerned for the citizens. But, Lord, we just lean to you for guidance and wisdom." Call this we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Tinsley. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Pearson, Councilman DeGaris.
Here.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Russian, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Here.
And Mayor Ampsheer.
Here.
We do have a form.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, we'll move to citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
My name is Jim Fisher, 606 Selma Street. I'd like to ask the council, I know you've been busy with Eight Points and so on, to redirect some energy towards cleaning the city up. I live in the central part of town. There's an alley that runs from Cynthia to Lois Street. There's been three copperheads killed on that alley in the last two months. And someone said, "A cottonmouth on Lois." Doesn't seem like a cottonmouth would be up in the mountains like that, but I'm not, you know, I can't call him a liar. So, anyway, a big black snake of some sort. We have houses out there used for storage, there's junk cars in the backyard, no, lawn's not mowed. You'll have a house that the lawn's mowed and one's not, or more than one. So, really, it's simple, garbage cans on the streets 24/7. I don't know of any city that allows that. I've checked, I've gone to Cape, Sykesville, Jackson, and spoken with the people at City Hall there. And I'm sure you see it, I mean, there's litter, people, I know it's not all the people by any means, but a small percentage of the people just use the streets for trashcans. Grass on the parkways. If the street sweeper doesn't pick it up, it doesn't get picked up. When the big blue cans are dumped in the truck, anything that falls out stays on the street. So, anyway, I'm sure you all have driven through the neighborhoods and seen it, it's creeping, just because it's not maybe in your neighborhood now, it soon will be. So, I just asked that you would take the time and the energy to redirect some energy towards cleaning up the city of Popper Bluff. I have a friend that lives out of state, he says every time he comes back, it's worse. And it's really uncalled for. As I said, I've talked to different cities, and it's enforcement. If you have an ordinance, it's fine, but you've got to enforce it, have some penalties. So, anyway, thank you for your time, and I hope you'll address that.
Thank you, sir. Of course, we realize that this is a problem in all over our city, it's something I've been concerned about for quite some time, and we do need to address this. Go ahead, Mr.
Randy Schultz, I own a business at 701 Vine Street, and I live at 217 Kaylee Circle, which is also in the city. I've brought some pictures of the property across the street from our business, and I'll pass those to David, and you can just take one, pass them around, I may not have enough for all of you. My concern is a lot like Jim's, and code enforcement is tired of hearing from me. At one period, I called them eight days in a row because there was garbage that sat right outside the very front door of this property. The renters would walk in and out and not pick it up and put it in the trashcan that was beside the door. You'll see on one of those pictures, there's eight bags of garbage sitting at the curb for three days. I called code enforcement day after day after day, asked for them to return my calls to make sure that they were getting the message. I did not get a return. You'll see in one of those pictures where I'm standing in the yard and the grass is almost up to my knees. He did finally, code enforcement did finally go by that property and give him a citation, which I don't know what a citation means in our code. But, from what I understand, this gentleman owns properties all over town, and the people on code enforcement refer to him as a slumlord. So, they have this problem all around the city, not only in my neighborhood. And apparently, there's nothing in the code that has anything for them to have leverage to do anything about it. I would like to see our codes looked at and some type of a penalty put in there for the homeowner or the property owner. The renters are in and out, as we all know, and they're not gonna, they don't care about our city. But, as property owners and taxpayers in our city, I would hope that they would take a little pride in making our community look better. And if you want me to research other cities around and do something to see what their codes are and what we could put in ours, but I think if you get to the pocketbook of the homeowner, you'll get some results in getting it cleaned up. And I'm just very disturbed that that's in my neighborhood where I try to run a business and keep our properties looking good. And you have to call code enforcement day after day after day. I've called some of the councilmen, and I don't think we should have to do that if we have codes and code enforcement people. You know, first of all, there's about 15 city trucks that drive by my property at least every day, and I've asked them to pick up that garbage because I was going to be having a large visitation and didn't think it was appropriate for my families to have to look at that trash thing on the curb. Well, we can't do that, that's our last resort. Well, I think somebody needs to do it, and then a penalty needs to be put to that property owner so that he provides his renters with a trashcan and trash service. Because, you know, they finally did get a trashcan the night of visitation, with wheels, they loaded it up three times and rolled it one block up to the telephone company and put it in their dumpster. That's trash service for those people, so they still don't have it. If you drive by there tonight, you'll see a trashcan on the east side of the building with trash bags on the ground, Mountain Dew boxes blowing in the yard, and just as Jim said, what didn't fit in the trashcan the last time and was spilled, is still in the yard and has now been pulverized and cut up by the mower. So, I think it's time that we get some enforcement into our code so that we can get into the pocketbook of the renter or the homeowner. And I'd be glad to help in any way you want me to. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a picture here on 1810 Thomas. It's been a pile of garbage in the backyard. This citizen showed me emails, had been emailing since February, trying to get this resolved. Is there not fines that we can impose or?
Yes, there is.
Do we just need to instruct our code enforcement to write these?
I think we just need to make code enforcement step up to what they're doing, and we may need to change some ordinances.
I mean, if somebody has been warned, like he says, he's calling eight days, if somebody has a fair warning that they need to take care of this, this grass, this gentleman also said that he received a seven-day notice, and on the eighth day, he got a $70 fine for not mowing that grass. I would like to see some more of this, like.
No, we definitely need to step up code enforcement, I agree with that 100%.
And tell them to get this ticket book going, and I believe it would, as he said, like Randy said.
I wanted to mention one other thing. As I said, I stopped in Cape last week and spoke with the Assistant City Manager. Anytime they write a ticket, like, for example, a yard, seven days, on the eighth day, there's a $150 administrative fee plus the cost of mowing the yard. They do it themselves, or they pay someone to do it. These slumlords, they have to have a permit to be in the rental business. If it's not taken care of, they pull the permit. So, I'm assuming if he has any other property for rent that's not already rented, he can't rent that until the property's taken care of. So, you know, consequences.
We'll review some other ordinances in other cities and see what we can change.
I left your copy somewhere.
I think Dennis Avery gave it to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ruth Scoggins, 1410 Rosedale. I had not planned to speak today, but this code issue coming up, I have something to share. Friday afternoon, after my mail came and the office was closed and I couldn't call them then, I did get a policeman to come out and look, and I was very appreciative of that. But, I got a code violation that I had either an old vehicle or trash or something on private or public property, and that there was a Ford Explorer that was supposed to be moved within seven days. Not my property. I got out and found out this afternoon, I found the Ford Explorer two blocks over, 1410, and another name on the street behind me. So, and also, they said they would have him check back with me today, and he didn't when I called this morning. But, you might want to kind of consider that when you're talking with your code people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Randy, you'd be willing to help go find some of those other towns?
I would be more than happy to help research that.
All right, appreciate that.
We do appreciate our citizens that are concerned and that will come and have input at this time. We move to our workshop required items. Item A, the City Council will review a proposed debt policy for the city of Popper Bluff.
Madam Mayor, you should have before you a debt policy that was created by our new financial advisor, WM Financials out of St. Louis. If you remember, you repealed the last one we had, which I think was 22 pages long. This one's more in line for a city the size of Popper Bluff. It's basically just a little over four pages long. As she told us in the last meeting, a lot of cities don't have debt policies, they just revise, go by the revised state statutes. Since we'd already had one and we're going through a bond issue, we thought we really needed a debt policy. If you have any questions, I think it's fairly self-explanatory.
Any questions, comments in the council?
And this is workshop only, we're not voting on this tonight.
Yes.
I agree with Mr. Massingham, this is a lot better, a lot easier to understand and easy for us to comply with.
Lot easier to read.
Make a motion, we pass this to the voting session, this will be the next council meeting?
Yes.
Second. Motion has been made in seconded to move to the voting session of July 20. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item B, the City Council will review a request from Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a conditional use permit to operate a drive-through window for the sale of prescription drugs in the C2 General Commercial District. The property is located at 2770 Northwest Wood Boulevard, and the applicant is Kroger Food Stores. Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, Kroger Food Stores are the property owner. This is a conditional use permit for a drive-through window, which is required in any business location here in town. We do have traffic plans, and it went through Planning and Zoning with the announced recommendation to approve. They have plenty of traffic stacking, they will route it along the west side of their building, close to where their gas pumps are at, so plenty of off-road traffic stacking. And I don't expect it to be that involved or that busy. Kroger has been there for quite some time, they are undergoing a significant remodel on the interior, specifically where the bank branch used to be and the pharmacy is, they're going to extend that on along the front of their store there. Surrounding land use to the north, south, east, and west, to the north, south, and west is C2 General Commercial, and to the east would be RS2 General Residential, which would be Northwest Medical Clinic Property. Access is from Northwest Wood, and Police and Fire Protection is available. As they are requesting a drive-through window to sell prescription drugs, the drive-through requires the conditional use, and I think they made a good proposal to the Planning and Zoning when they brought it in. And staff and zoning commission recommended approval with the following stipulations. One, that no alcoholic beverages be sold through the drive-through window, and two, that the conditional use permit go with the business owner. If ownership changes, the new owner would need to apply for a conditional use permit to continue with the drive-through window. Any questions? There is a representative from Kroger here tonight if there are additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
I make a motion, we pass on to the voting session on July, what, the exact?
20th.
20th.
Second.
For approval.
Motion has been made in seconded to move to voting session held July the 20th. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item C, the City Council will discuss a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding an agreement between the city of Popper Bluff and APX. Mr. Bott.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. On April 21st of 2014, the city entered into a mandatory agreement with Southwestern Power Administration, which modified our power sales agreement to reflect the city's relocation into SPP or Southwest Power Pool Balance and Authority. In this agreement, the city is required to provide at the city's expense a secondary communication path to SPP. We took quotes from several vendors, and the low vendor was APX. We discussed this at an earlier advisory board and would recommend the approval of this agreement. Any questions?
This is just a one-time thing with them, right?
It's annual, it's year to year, yeah, as long as we stay in SPP or SWPA contract requires us to have.
Is this contract renewable every year, though?
Yes, yes. 30 days. The first contract, I believe, was for one year, and then after that, we can terminate in 30 days.
Okay.
Other questions? Comments?
Make a motion, we pass this to the July 20th meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded to move to the voting session, July 20. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, the City Council will discuss the authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Spyglass Group LLC to analyze telecommunications bills to seek cost recovery, service elimination, and cost reduction recommendations.
Yes, Spyglass is a company that comes in and analyzes the last eight years of your telecommunications bills, your landline phones, your cellphones, your internet service. They'll analyze eight months of that, or eight years of that, and see if we've been overcharged or charged for things that we never had. The way the agreement works is, if they find things, any cost recovery we have from the vendors, this company receives 50% of that. And if there's any service elimination savings, they will get one-year savings of that, and then after that first year, then all the savings is ours. And we, like I said, we recover, they'll get 50% upfront and we'll get 50%. What they would do is go back and look at first two, last two months' bills, and if they think they've found things, then we'll come back to the council, and we'll actually issue a contract for them to do the eight-year study. That's.
They don't charge anything?
No, there's no charge unless they find something, so. I know they've worked with, I think, the city of Farmington, I'm not sure what other cities.
Farmington and Park Hills.
Okay.
Okay, all we need now is a verbal approval at this time, so.
Consensus.
Consensus, yes.
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 Consensus. Alrighty. Item E, the City Council will discuss an amendment to ordinance number 7255 regarding the city's contract with Big River Telephone Company LLC for the city's telecommunication needs.
Yes, what we'd like to do is extend this contract one more year. With all the upgrades we've done in the last few months with our computers and our telephone system, we really don't feel comfortable if we would have to switch in midstream, and we'd like to just extend it one more year, and the next year, we would bid out that service.
Make a motion, move this to the voting session to be held tonight?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded to move item E to the voting session to be held tonight. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item F, the City Council will discuss rescinding the Industrial Development Authority Board.
This was something that was brought before you all at the last meeting. I think we've been told by three attorneys that there's really no protection to use the Industrial Development Authority Board to issue the bonds for the Eight Points Project, so we're just asking that this be rescinded.
Comments, questions?
I'm holding it on tonight, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion, we move it to the voting session.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded to move item F to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The City Council, item G, the City Council will discuss changing the name of the streets in Cripple Creek Development.
Mr. Avery, you want to address the?
Yes, sir. What happened about two years, a little over two years ago, we accepted the roads in Cripple Creek Development, and at the time that we wrote the ordinance, they were named the North-South Road, the East-West Road, School Road, and those don't really seem proper names. Since we're having businesses locating on those roads, we wanted to come up with something that was more agreeable and actually made sense. And I have talked to the property owner, the major property owner out there, Mr. Duckett, and asked if he would select some names for us, which he did. And the East-West Road would become Tucker Road. We chose a different name initially, but we found that we had a conflict with an existing road name in town. And that's the main interior road that runs east and west, north of PP Highway. There's a short road that's close to the Robertson Development, which is Duckett Drive. And the School Road, we determined that we could name it the Kindergarten Road, Kindergarten Drive, because that was accepted by the city as well, as part of that road change out there. Any questions?
Normally, on any developments, whether it's residential or commercial, we allow the property owner to name the streets unless they have no desire to, so.
We hope that they will, because that tends to be easier than trying to come up with a consensus after the fact to name the roads.
As long as they don't conflict with any other roads.
Correct.
Emergency services.
Yes, you want to make sure that if you're doing emergency response, that you're not sending them to the wrong place, or there's any confusion there, so that's why we went with the renaming of the one location. Thank you.
Make a motion, move this item to the voting session to be held tonight?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded to move item Agenda G to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item H, the City Council will review a proposed employment contract for the city manager. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. It's just, I was presented in front of you as a one-year contract. Either party to terminate, want to give a specific time picture? Yes, ma'am. It's a one-year contract, it allows both parties to terminate the agreement within specified time limits. Salaries is at $120,000. The benefits are as other city employees standard, standard benefits for insurance and retirement, vision, dental, and the same like. It also provides a cellphone, since he's, needs to be accessible at all times. And it's a, I believe, a fair contract, and ask the council to review it and to approve it. Any questions?
Make a motion, we move this item to the voting session to be held tonight?
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded to move item H to the voting session to be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving to the action required items. Item AA, Bill Number 7836. The City Council will take action on an ordinance rescinding the Industrial Development Authority Board.
Move for first reading. Second.
Motion has been made in seconded for the first reading of Bill Number 7836. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, Mr. Smith.
In accordance with the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, rescinding Resolution Numbers 1820 and 1821, establishing the Industrial Development Authority Board for the city.
Move for second reading of Bill Number 7836.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded for second reading of Bill Number 7836. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In accordance with the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, rescinding Resolution Numbers 1820 and 1821, establishing the Industrial Development Authority Board for the city.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7836. Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
And Mayor Ampsheer.
Yes.
It does pass.
Bill Number 7836 has been adopted. Item BB, Bill Number 7837, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an employment contract for the position of city manager.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 7837.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded for the first reading of Bill Number 7837. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In accordance with the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute an employment contract with Mark Massingham for the position of city manager for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded for second reading of Bill Number 7837. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In accordance with Popper Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute an employment contract with Mark Massingham for the position of city manager for the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7837. Roll call, please.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Ampsheer.
Yes.
Bill does pass.
Bill Number 7837 has been adopted. Item CC, Bill Number 7838, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement amending ordinance Number 7255 relative to the city's contract with Big River Telephone Company LLC for the city's telecommunication needs.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 7838.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded for first reading of Bill Number 7838. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In accordance with Popper Bluff, Missouri, amending ordinance Number 7255, authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement with Big River Telephone Company LLC for the city's telecommunication services.
Move for second reading. Second.
Motion has been made in seconded for second reading of Bill Number 7838. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In accordance with the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri, amending ordinance Number 7255, authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement with Big River Telephone Company LLC for the city's telecommunication services.
Move for adoption. Second.
Motion has been made in seconded for adoption of Bill Number 7838. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Ampsheer.
Yes.
I have five yes votes.
Bill Number 7838 has been adopted. Resolution Number 1825, the City Council will take action on resolution changing the name of streets in Cripple Creek Development.
Move for the reading of Resolution Number 1825.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for reading of Resolution Number 1825. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
A resolution of the city of Popper Bluff, Missouri to change the names of certain streets in the Cripple Creek Development.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of Resolution Number 1825. Roll call, please.
Councilman DeGaris?
Yes.
Councilman Crocker?
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Ampshire?
Yes.
We do have five yes votes.
Resolution Number 1825 has been adopted. Item EE, the City Council of the city of Popper Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law,
Move for adjournment after the city manager's report?
Second.
We need a motion to move into closed session.
Make a motion, will you move into closed session after the city manager's report?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move to closed session after our city manager's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And now I'm happy to present to you our new city manager for the city manager's report, city manager Mark Massingham.
Thank you. I'd like to first thank the council for giving me this position. I'd like to also promise the citizens that I'll work my hardest at this job. And I do know we have a code enforcement problem and we'll work on that right away. It may take a little while, but we'll definitely do something. Other than that, I want you to know that I really appreciate this opportunity and I'll work very hard at it. On to other things, we had a very successful fireworks display sponsored by Briggs and Stratton for, I'm not sure how many years they've done that, probably twenty years now.
Twenty-one years.
And also a very successful parade. I think Larry Hill has provided cars for the council members. They've done that for the last fourteen years and we'd like to thank them. I think Baldwin Motors provided cars for.
Butler County Fair.
Butler County Fair, they've done that before. Other than that, we just proceed as we need to and I thank everybody.
I'd like to thank the city of Popper Bluff, Police Department, Fire Department, Street Department, Downtown Development, all these for helping put on the fair, I mean, excuse me, the parade and fireworks. Without them, we couldn't do it. And they're there on the spot all the time and helping do everything we ask. Again, I appreciate all those facilities and all those peoples for doing a good job for the city. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Anything else to come before the city council?
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. This meeting is adjourned.